Web's telling me it's 5:02, so I'll call the special Tuesday, April 22nd. Town of West Newbury Planning Board Meeting to order. And yeah, the first item on the agenda, discussion to vote on town meeting recommendations regarding select board approval, approved changes to the following proposed zoning bylaw amendments. Let me just start by saying that I had a good conversation with Wendy and everything's cool. About about this as far as I'm concerned, and I think there's there's no problem. There are some, there are some questions to be resolved in the future about how much of the town warrant is binding and who has control over what language goes into addendums and all that kind of stuff. But it it doesn't matter, we're all on the same page this time around. That's a low priority item to to get figured out.
Great, thank you.
Just to make sure that things in the future are understood, who who does what?
Thank you, Ray, for coming to that understanding.
Yes.
Yeah, no worries, no worries. Yeah, I'm I, as you may have picked up, you know, I'm concerned about what responsibilities fall under which board and and how that teases up if in the future there were some big disagreement between the two boards.
Right.
And and I think, you know, I could or we could put a list of questions together that that they could send on to the attorney for interpretation. But she also, and I bet you that Katrina had something prepared for me as well. But the language for the motion that Wendy sent me is fine. I don't have any problem with that language.
Good.
And just to be clear to anybody who's listening in and for the record, we took a second vote on on the whole possibility in unusual circumstances of granting a developer a waiver under McMod. And we, the planning board, took a second vote and it was unanimous to pull that possibility out of the proposed bylaw. And 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 the Board of Select like
The possibility, yeah, the possibility of a waiver was pulled out.
Right, there's there's no waiver on inclusionary zoning. We will not propose any such waiver, despite the fact that originally I think it was the consultant that had that language in there. But in any case, the Finance Committee, the Select Board and the Planning Board were all in unanimous agreement not to have that waiver language in there, and that's the way the motion will be made on 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 the floor. And, you know, if anybody wanted to discuss that now, we could, but I'm guessing that we're all, we're all fine with that.
Just gonna say again, for the record or for those who are listening, who haven't been steeped in this. Now, the proposed bylaw mirrors exactly other bylaws in town in two regards. It requires 10% affordable housing under our inclusionary zoning bylaw, and it also caps the height of structures at 35 feet. So I think that consistency is important and valuable.
Yes, and 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 it was a reasonable concern of lots of people around town. So I'm glad that everybody's in agreement. The other thing about the motion to be made is Wendy wondered, you know, and I wondered the logistics, and so the way it'll play out unless there's an objection here is that I will make the motion as it's written, make sure all the legal language is correct. Somewhere, you know, when they asked us, when when the town moderator asked the Finance Committee for their recommendation, at this point anyway, we expect them to unanimously recommend ad- adoption of the bylaw and they'll tell their reasons why. And the Select Board will, af- after this morning's discussion, it's like I I recommended that the Select Board give a paragraph, nothing very lengthy, about their support and why, and and I will do the same. If there is concern here in the Planning Board about what it is that I will say to represent our recommendation to the town to adopt the bylaw, I have no problem drafting up the, you know, the I intend for it to be very brief. I have no problem drafting up the my proposal for what I'll say. I'm running out to you guys for your comments and feedback, or I can just run with it, it's your choice.
Okay.
I'd like you to write it out, Ray.
Okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to read it, and I'd like to send you my iteration of it from which of the process, which you might choose to include, it may need to be more than a paragraph, but I don't think we want to go on and on. So I've been editing what I had previously written and sent around to various folks. I've made it as factual and unbiased as I can.
That's, that's goal, that's, that's actually, I'd be glad to get that. And and just to make sure everybody's clear, this will, okay, so one of the things that I I've done fairly recently is gotten into the weeds about, you know, all the chapter MGL stuff. And as far as I understand, and not disputed by Wendy this morning, when a zoning bylaw, a zoning bylaw can come to the Board of Selectmen's awareness in any number of ways. And there's all sorts of ways that people can propose a zoning bylaw. The way I understand the law, and this has to be verified eventually in the future, the Select Board becomes aware of it, and then it's written right in there that they send it to the Planning Board for review. And then later on in the Mass General Laws, it says, then the Planning Board makes a recommendation to the town at town meeting. So I know in the past we were taking votes to recommend stuff back to the Select Board. By what I read, we make a recommendation to the town and in the form of a recommendation or a report. So and Katrina, you can, you can confirm this for me, but after the motion is made, then I, with this script that you all have a chance to to look at, I will make that report slash recommendation to the town prior to opening the floor to discussion. So that's, that's how, that's how it works as far as I understand.
Yes, I I agree with that. The reason why I do send them to the Select Board is because in other towns I've worked in, they will print that recommendation right in the warrant. So it's there for everyone to read at their leisure at home, and so they know what the recommendation is. And so what I would like to ask you, so tonight on the agenda, we have three possible recommendations that the Board will be voting on. One for the accessory dwelling, which is slightly changed from the version that you already voted a recommendation on. So we want to redo that recommendation so that everyone knows the Planning Board is on board with the changes that the Select Board made. The second one, also the same thing, the floodplain overlay district, small changes were made. You want to revise that so that we have a new, fresh recommendation, so everyone knows you agree with the changes. The same with the McMod. And so I did include draft language for those. And I think the first two are very simple, the McMod, if you would like to add an explanation of why you think the residents should adopt this rather than just the straightforward, I would keep them separate, I would, I would read whatever the Planning Board votes on tonight, and that is from the Planning Board. And then what you say afterwards could be in addition, and your explanation of of why you think the town residents should support McMod.
Well, okay, but I mean, it's too late to print our recommendations in the warrant.
Right, right, but you want the, you want everyone to know that the Board has voted on this recommendation with you.
Yeah, yeah, I guess what I guess, and I'm fine, I don't want to get all tied up here and and I don't have any real objections here. I guess what I'm saying is that we can make, just, just like the Finance Committee will at town meeting, recommend to the town their unanimous recommendation that the bylaw be adopted, and they'll say their little bit. And then the Selectmen will do that and they'll say their little bit. And then we'll do it, and my intention is to say our little bit. But I want to, I'm not sure that the language I intend to use as a recommendation to the town matches the language that you propose here.
Oh, yeah, no, see, what I'm suggesting is you just said that the Finance Committee will make a recommendation as the committee and say a little bit. That's what I'm saying. The Board on a whole tonight has language in front of them that they can either use or revise slightly so that that is the the recommendation from the Planning Board, and then the other Boards said a little bit too. You said Wendy's going to say a little bit, and that will be the part you're talking about where you can can explain why you think people should support it.
Right, well, I I intend to do that, and I tend to do that on behalf of the whole Board, unless somebody doesn't like what I've come up with.
I, I, I would, go ahead, Ann.
I think that's fine, I think then there will be discussion, we know there will be discussion. But let's get through all the required language and then treat that discussion as more the back and forth educational portion, and there, you know, we'll have to have to all stay a little light on our feet, and maybe that's a case where various Board members could chime in if you're comfortable.
Yes, absolutely, so that's the other thing, Deb and I had a chat, and I I think that that's, that's right. During during the discussion that happens during the meeting, when questions come up, if if I assume that we'll all be seated close enough together, that we can, I can look over if I'm the one, I presume that I'll be standing there if the moderator wants me to to be able to receive questions.
Right.
At that point, I'll I'll toss questions over to you guys and see if anybody raises their hand, they want to be the one to handle that reply kind of a thing, and that way we can all chime in.
Yeah, I think that could make it feel more collaborative, if you will.
Sure, more collaborative and and, yeah, and make sure that all the voices are out there and that I don't, I don't screw things up or go rambling.
Do you usually have a problem getting seconds? Do the Board members want to volunteer to give a second or?
It always comes from the audience.
Yeah, that that won't be a problem.
No, this is your first town meeting, we're usually fairly relaxed, Katrina, usually.
Usually, usually, yeah.
I I'd like to weigh in here.
Go right ahead.
I I would like you to make the proposal, but someone else to read the recommendation.
What is the proposal, Deb? What are you saying is the proposal?
I'd like Ray, Ray to move the motion, I mean, right?
Yeah.
Right, but then I think it would be good if Tim or Ann, not me, maybe Brian, could give the Planning Board rationale and not hear strictly from you. And not, and I don't want to wait until the question and answer part. I would like somebody else on the Planning Board to to deliver the Planning Board rationale, and and it it's just because I think that people have I I don't know how to, we have
I know, I know, you're trying, you're trying to be delicate here, Deb.
I am, I
Yeah, and I I appreciate that.
I just think that either Ann or Tim could deliver the recommendation on behalf of the rest of the Planning Board and having a fresh face and a fresh voice, I think can't do anything but help.
Well, first of all, I think the recommendation is one thing, but this sort of report is is a separate thing, right, Ray? You're imagining me to
No, there's, there's making the motion, that that language is already scripted.
Right, okay.
That that'll be seconded.
Got it.
And then and then will come the time to make the recommendation. And and Dev, I appreciate that, and I will, I will go along with what the Board as a whole wants. I think that I should be the one to do it because right now I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. And I I, that's traditionally who's done it, makes sense to me, as long as you've seen the language and know what I'm going to be saying. I I don't, I don't expect to screw that up or drag it out or or anything like that.
Do we have that yet?
No, that's what
That's what I told, that I was gonna draft and I was gonna take your language and make that part of it, and and
Mine's pretty verbose, so it takes some trimming, but it addresses some of the things that people have raised as issues of late.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, and and that, and again, everybody could get a chance to look at it. I do think, I do think that being concise and fairly short with the recommendation would be important because people begin to to lose focus if it gets very long. And then and then a lot of the other things would be handled by the question and answer, and I have no problem tossing that to you and and to the other Planning Board members as it seems appropriate. And so, so, so if there's a, so people in town are supposed to direct their questions to the moderator. The moderator decides whether or not the question is appropriate and and needs to be answered, then normally the moderator will then turn to the Board or the person, in this case, I think she'll turn to me. And then I will look over you guys and see which one of you wants to answer it. And on occasion, if it's brief, and I'm pretty sure I'm not going to be screwing up, it's that you would be worried about me screwing up, Deb. I would, I would answer, I would answer a couple of those questions myself, but I I I think that can be a whole collaborative thing where we get everybody
Yeah, you can always add on, Ray, right, you know, and you know, like, one of us take a shot at it and then you could, you could continue.
Absolutely, but I I wouldn't expect that I would do that anymore than like, let's say, you're saying something to him and then Ann wants to make sure that something else goes well, so, and and again, my, I view town meeting floor is very different than the informational sessions that we've had leading up to it. And I know, Deb, you've been around a while and Ann's been around, and I I'm, I'm very careful at town meeting, there are town meetings, I don't stand up and say anything. And whenever I do stand up and say something at town meeting, I try to keep it very short and get right to the point. And that would be my intention here as well, but I am under advisement because of, because Deb, a close friend of mine, has pointed out things that 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 I can do better, and, you know, it's important to me to, you know, do the best I can, and and that's fully my intention, good.
So I'm concerned that we, I mean, we've had all these informational sessions, and yet today I got a brochure put into my mailbox by the no folks, which I think is technically not allowed because it wasn't mailed, but anyway, neither here nor there. But I did mention it, and, you know, there are still misapprehensions out there.
Yes.
And so I don't know how we, maybe this is just going to have to be a thing in real time, how we walk the the tightrope of not having yet another, you know, hour-plus informational session while making sure that people understand.
Yeah, the misapprehensions of like what's required by the law, Ann, do you think?
Some of them are a little, a little bit like that. And then, you know, there are all these impacts to consider, and it has to do with traffic and water and school, you know, all the things that we've reported, but somehow, you know, it isn't, it's as if we had never done that. One of the things that I'm concerned about is is people understanding that although the state's deadline for wrapping this all up is December 31st, our deadline is in fact Fall Town Meeting. This is something that must be voted by the legislature, which is the town meeting. So the idea that we have all the time in the world or that we even have whatever that is, you know, seven months or eight months is is incorrect, so.
So see, right there is an example, right, where a question, what I expect would, there'd be a question that would come up and and it'd go to the moderator, moderator would come to me, and I'd be like, and then I would point it right to Ann and say, Ann, or 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 on another question, Deb.
Tim or Deb, yeah.
And I think, I think that's the only thing we can do, and I hope it doesn't, you know, turn into a big, long thing, but it might be.
Yeah, just the one thing that I was thinking of was that if Town Council is there and there's this discussion where people are obviously promoting things that aren't consistent with the law, that we, you know, saying that we don't have to, I, Town Council needs to speak up, you know, because that shouldn't be us, you know, trying to advise people of what the law requires, that's the job of Town Council. So I'm hoping that we can call on Town Council to say exactly like what Ann said about the timing. You know, what that means for December 31st, this is, this is a hard and fast date, you know.
That's a point, that's a point well taken, also, I wonder, is Ian gonna be there, Katrina, from the Merrimack Valley Planning?
He wasn't planning on it, but I could ask.
You know, it, I'm because he's also somebody, Tim, who is has been around the block a few times with this stuff and
I can ask him.
The Town Council's sitting up there too, Ray.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, and I just think
There is, is I, I, I wonder if Town Council is up to speed on the nuances when it comes to this, I I, for example, when it comes to the deadline, I can, I can see Ann saying what she just said, and then me saying, I, you know, Town Council, can you confirm this kind of stuff? And then maybe, maybe the Town Council, like you're suggesting, Tim, could short circuit some questions right off the bat. For example, this is an overlay district, and Deb, I checked, I checked on this.
Yes.
This is an overlay district, it overlays existing zoning. The developer in an overlay district can use the existing zoning. The the developer, if the MBTA is is on a lot, the developer is not required to use it.
That's right.
In our case, on NAP, if the town votes this in, the developer could choose to to use OSPD or Chapter 40B or whatever, they're they're not forced by the state to use it. And this is a cautionary tale, by the way, because if you just go out on Google and you ask the question, Google's AI answer is incorrect. So the the AI answer that pops up on Google is that developer has to use it. When, and then you read more about it and the AI then gets it right eventually. And what it says is if the developer uses the MBTA zoning, it has to comply with state standards for the MBTA zoning, so.
I would suggest not relying on AI at all.
Exactly, exactly, but what I'm saying is that this
People do.
Yes, and this is what may have led to some of the misinformation and confusion and some of the stuff that showed up in that brochure and and I haven't checked my own mailbox yet today, but
Yeah, I need to see it too, but the other part is, let me interrupt just for a second. The other misapprehension is that this is being jammed down people's throats.
Yeah, people hate that.
We need to remind them that this process started in 2022, that we started looking for the sites that would meet the requirements, that they were on public infrastructure, that they had a bus going by, that they were walking distance to town. I mean, there are a great many aspects of this that were factored in, and and that none of them included the overlay over existing structures. I I think that that needs to be somewhere in the talk.
Well, that's, that's another thing that I looked at today, Deb, and and yeah, you, you can put the zoning over existing developments.
Yes, you said, yes, you can. But but the intention, I think, was that if you were retrofitting or adaptively reusing existing structures, I, to to impose it over a new condominium complex, it makes no sense whatsoever, and perhaps
I I
they will continue to keep in that.
No, no, I I agree that it's contrary to the spirit of the law, however, I I dug into it again this afternoon, and and it, you, you can do it, doesn't mean it's a good idea, doesn't mean we want it, doesn't mean it makes any sense in the long run, but it it does satisfy the state. Now, one thing I did bounce into, because I did hear, I don't know where it was, Facebook or one of our previous meetings, somebody's like, well, put it on the industrial zone. That doesn't work, because if you get into the the actual, the law as written, it has to be on developable parcels. So it, it, there has to be a reasonable expectation that you could actually build the housing in the overlay district. So you can't put the whole district in a wetland. And for us in our our charming little industrial zone over there, since a lot of it's wet and since a lot of it has steep slopes and since it's behind the police station and there's no access, you you couldn't do, I, in my opinion, you'd be, you'd be setting yourself open to, you'd be liable to the state for that because that's not clearly developable land.
Yeah, they wouldn't approve it.
Yeah, so
That's, that that needs to be said in what Katrina said rather than what you said. So if it can be succinctly stated, not that it's, oh, it could be done, but it's not a great idea. You tell the reasons why it's a bad idea.
Okay, well, how's this? The state wouldn't approve it if we put it over industrial land, the state won't approve it if we put it on wetlands.
Right.
But the state would approve it if we put it on ocean metal.
I don't know where that is.
I don't think that needs to be your opinion, I don't think
Yeah, but I, I wouldn't bring, yeah, I wouldn't.
I don't, I don't want to bring it up.
Yeah, okay.
But 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 somebody will bring it up.
They will bring it up, you're absolutely
Bring it up, they will, it's in this, I'm sure it's in
And if somebody brings it up, I, I'll be glad to toss it over to you, Deb, but I I can't lie about it.
Right, I can't lie either, I don't lie.
Okay, so so we're agreeing on that, so if somebody asks, could we put this over Follinsby, brand-new subdivision, that's at Follinsby? The answer is
Technically.
Technically, you could.
And what that means is
Ray, what is the difference between putting it on Follinsby and and waiting a year and putting it on the NAP parcel, which is going to be developed? With a development similar to Follinsby, and because the Planning Board is focused, they've done all the traffic studies, all based on the NAP property.
No, no, you could do that too.
All of a sudden switch and put it somewhere else now.
No, no, but people, people want to.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, you need to explain that the NAP property will be developed, and so in a year, that is going to be one of those developed properties that everyone is saying, why didn't you put it on a developed property?
No, no, Katrina, I I I agree with that, alls I'm saying is that I expect what's going to happen in town meeting, because I've heard this. There are people that want to not put it on NAP, they want to put it someplace else in town.
Right.
Right, and and all kinds of ideas have come out, and in our information meetings, people are like, oh, you know, in this town, they put it on, you know, over a factory. And this town, they put it on old Kmart, and on this town, they put it on a place that was already densely populated and developed. What, you know, can't, if if we put it, if we put it over, if, I'm not saying it's a good idea, but if somebody in town says, if we put it on ocean metal, would that satisfy the state? The honest answer is yes. And then I promise you, I would follow up and say, I don't think it makes any sense to do that, we've got
Don't say, I don't think, you can say the purpose of the state law is to create multifamily housing to increase housing. It does not increase housing by considering that option.
I'm glad to let you say that directly, I got no problem with you saying that.
What, okay.
So another, another thing on this brochure, they do talk about an option being already developed land, and they they list some examples, including South Street, you know, great, that's not on the water system, it's, you know, not on, it's not on the bus route, it's ridiculous. And then the other one is buildable but not available land, and they use Don as an example, well, not available. If you, it would be available the next day if all of a sudden it had a high use, you know. The idea that something is not available is just a matter of waiting until that oldest generation dies and those kids who moved out of town come back wanting to split up the land, as happened on so many parcels, you know.
The old, the old saying, the old saying is, we've all got a price, you just haven't found mine yet.
That's right, that's right. That's right. That's right. So, you know, not available, nah, everything's available. You know, it's just.
But nothing is buildable. That's the other aspect. Having, you know, I know it's in everybody's backyard. Putting septic systems in vast tracts of undeveloped land is off the record. And so much of our land, we've successfully conserved. Conservation restrictions. You can't, and church.
Let me channel your concerns here, Deb. If somebody suggests putting it on conservation property. I can simply say the state won't approve that.
That's right. And you know, it's interesting because I can't, I don't know the year the land bond passed. But since then, it was probably what, the early two thousands? Anybody remember? Nobody here was on open space.
The land bond, Anne.
The big land bond for five million dollars that allowed us, do you know, Katrina, to start buying?
The CPA funds?
Way before that. We've been ahead of the curve on a lot of things. Maybe it was in the nineties even.
AR was in the nineties. Is that what you're referring to?
The APR. No, we passed a land bond and it's when we bought. Pipe stave and, you know, when the protection went on to pipe stave.
Oh, so the soccer fields and all that stuff?
Yes, but it was a land bond. I think it was for five million dollars and they tried to get it for ten. And it got talked down to five, but they, we passed this bond. It was in the Tracy Blaze era and bought a lot of land. And since then, you know, Greenbelt expanded up this way. And really put a focus on this part of the county. And we've been able to protect a lot of land through acquisition. You know, chapter lands that came on the market by partnering with Greenbelt and by frankly, getting landowners to put conservation restrictions on stuff. So, so. One of the results of that is that we have. A huge amount of protected open space in this town. Amount of land. Which by definition means that development is going to become more concentrated in the developed areas.
Developable areas.
And we've developed along Main Street since I've been on the board, Ocean Meadow. That was Albert Knowles's farm.
Yep.
Yep.
Hottages at River Hill. That was the Greater Sullivan family's dairy farm, I think originally, that was being. This cornfield. Then most recently Drake's Landing. Also, Daley owned it. He's owns a lot of property in town. He's developed almost all of it. And that was one of the last parcels. They happened to be along Main Street because those were desirable parcels to be developed. And now the Marshall family are doing the same thing with one of the last ones along Main Street that hasn't been developed. Or protected. And this is. An evolutionary process. I don't know. You you all know what I mean, but. People know the history of all this. This is.
I'm glad.
It goes, you know?
And that's the thing. And I think I'm I'm guessing, Deb, you and Katrina agree, uh, wholeheartedly agree with me. Uh, on this. And that's the thing that needs to be made clear. If it hasn't been made clear to everybody already, there'll be people at town meeting who haven't done the other stuff. That whether the MBTA zoning overlay district goes on that or not. The most likely thing is that nap will be developed with a with with a large number of bedrooms in it.
Ninety bedrooms, up to ninety bedrooms.
Seventy to ninety is likely. And the the best result for the town, the type of zoning that gives the town the most control. Is the MBTA zoning?
So we're not planning, though, to do a slideshow and say, look at these different options and this one looks so much better. We can't do all that again, right?
We've, we've done that.
Can we have it on the wall? Can we have those pictures still up on the wall? Is that electioneering too close to the polls? I don't know.
I don't know.
Katrina, did, are there, was that plan that had both the yield plan, the open space and the. Um, McMod plan that John used in his presentation? We don't have those. Those are his, right?
No, those were on the wall the other day.
No, they weren't.
Oh, I thought they were.
No, no.
Okay, those are his.
And I I would feel uncomfortable putting up the developers.
But the Dodson and Flinker advisory plans that they did two years ago. Um, they were very similar, weren't they?
And they went up to the front, too.
They had the eighty seven units built into them.
Oh, they did. Okay.
They weren't restricted by the septic for their concept plans.
Got it.
And but I, you know, um, the other thing too. Is that, you know, Sarkis could change his mind.
Sure.
Run the spreadsheet and come up with something that doesn't look like that at all. Say it's bait and switch. And it's not bait and switch.
No, no, that's right. Yeah, he could do a subdivision and sell off the lots. You know, it really depends how.
Yes.
What forks in the road he comes to personally and financially.
I, so I come circling back. I make the the legal motion. It's seconded. Then I make our little report, something everybody's.
Then the finance committee and the select board weigh in.
Yeah, they have their little reports, select board weighs in, then we weigh in with our recommendation to the town. I'll get Deb's draft. I'll, I'll craft some language as well.
I'd like you to, and and I'd like anybody to, yeah.
Yep, yep. And I'll get, I'll get, I'll get stuff from Anne and Tim and I'll.
Clearly slightly different things that we're all interested in making sure.
And my, my goal will be to condense it down and make it as. Unemotional, as factual and concise as possible. And that might not not mean not getting everything you you've got there, Deb, for that.
I get it. I get it.
Yep, no, I'll condense it down. I'll send that out to everybody. We can't have a background email discussion. Everybody knows this, but I'm saying this for people who might be listening in. Uh, but you, you can give me direct feedback. That satisfies, uh, open meeting laws. And then, uh, and then I'll send that out so everybody knows what I'm going to say. And then I'll say that and say that we're unanimous in our recommendation to the town that they adopt this bylaw. And then the moderator will open it up for questions and will respond to those questions. And on those questions. I intend to throw the answer, the. Throw it to whoever wants to answer that particular question with their own language and their own opinions.
That's fine.
Good. Okay, now, going back to our agenda. I think we should go ahead with, um. Let's see, our votes on the recommendations that Katrina has put up.
For the ADU and the flood overlay district.
For for all of this stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
And it looks like Katrina is getting it. There it is.
ADUs.
Okay, so it. If, um, on this one, you're, you're not going to be offering an explanation. I believe Sam Jocelyn will. Um, if you would like to cut these recommendations shorter, see the part next to the bullet. That's really all you need to say. At town meeting. You don't need the rest of that. That's just flowery language and giving background. Um, I would just keep it short.
I agree.
Yeah, I think that last paragraph is sufficient. It's good to have the rest for the record, but.
Yes.
People will get impatient.
So I'll make the motion that that this be our recommendation. Regarding the ADU. Katrina, are we doing this right, the way you envisioned it?
Yep. And and you're just citing the the bulleted paragraph, right?
Yes. And and this, and this is because of the basically editorial changes. Right?
Yes.
Yes. Required by the state.
Yeah, to conform with the state law, exactly right.
With this date law, all right.
Is this in its entirety? There's no second page?
No, just the bullet items are going to be our recommendation.
On this one, yes.
On this one.
Um, where's the language of the actual motion?
Uh, the bullet.
It'll be, it'll be.
I move that our recommendation is, as seen here at the bulleted item. Quote, the board voted unanimously five zero to make a recommendation to town meeting voters, dot, dot, dot.
Yeah, Deb, the the motions get written by the town. We don't write the motions.
But it's, it's.
The motion.
No, I I will rewrite this and that this is what. The board, someone, I think Ray will be standing up at town meeting to give the planning board recommendation on.
But the recommendation is not the motion. The motion is different.
Oh, right.
Yeah. The, the. The actual motion will be a scripted thing that.
Yeah, they're just.
Yeah. Yeah, it has to, it has to comply with all the state laws and we have to say things in just the right way and.
So, so the McMod bylaw runs to forty two pages in the version that I hear. How long is the ADU proposal, the the actual motion and?
It is, so the motion will refer to the to the addendum as written in the town warrant.
Yeah.
How many pages in the town warrant is it? Do we have an idea?
Two or three pages. I I do have the town warrant, right?
Oh, good. Thank you.
The bylaw itself? Yeah. It's not huge, but we're not going to read all that.
On this vote and.
All those in favor of this bullet item and just this bullet item being the planning board's recommendation. Indicate by saying I in your name. Ray Cook, I.
Anne Bardine, I.
Deb Hamilton, I.
Tim Cronin, I.
It's, it's four to zero with one planning board member not present. So it passes.
Okay, and I will, I will write that up and so that you will have the final recommendation to be able to read that at the meeting. And, um, Deb, it's three pages long.
Thank you.
Okay, along those lines, we have the next item. Uh, regarding the floodplain overlay district amendments.
And this is the same thing. You can just take the bulleted item.
Right, so I'll move that the bulleted item here, if you could scroll up through the, um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There it is. I move that the bulleted item as shown here on this draft, uh, to be our recommendation.
Second.
Okay. And again, discussion, and this is a similar thing, just changing some language to make sure that we, everything matches.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
No.
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 All those in favor, say I in your name. Ray Cook, I.
Anne Bardine, I.
Deb Hamilton, I.
Tim Cronin, I.
It passes by a vote of four to zero with one planning board member not present.
And Deb, that was a nine-page long one. I thought maybe you were going to ask that question.
All right. And now we get to the proposed McMod overlay district.
Oh, I'm sorry, again, jeez.
Why are there two bullets just here?
Remember, the state needs, that's required language that has to be made. In the planning board's recommendation, that first paragraph.
So they're both going to be said.
Yes.
Even though one's not, yeah, yellow. Okay.
Minimum gross dense, and and gross got left in, huh?
That was different. That was for ADU. Oh, no, this one. I thought gross got removed from somewhere.
I thought so, too. Must have been something else.
No, I.
Yeah, that was, that was something else.
So gross density isn't taken out of it. It was that, that you can't use gross density in the definition section.
Okay.
No, counterintuitive, okay. So the recommendation will be the last, both bulleted paragraphs, right?
Yes.
Two, okay.
So I'll move that the planning board's recommendation be the two bullet items as written on this draft.
Second.
And and now under discussion.
I'm not quite ready to vote.
Okay.
Um, I'm reading here something that I have never seen the terminology before. I don't know that I don't like it. But concentrated development. Um, I haven't seen that phrase used anywhere else. Uh, less than half a mile from the business district on a public, public bus route. All right, yeah, no, this is great. This, this is a great.
This is the exact language that Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities gave us and said, we need to. Use this language and make this motion.
Exactly, all right.
Pretty great, because concentrated development is super helpful for us as this comes on later.
Isn't it? Yes. And I like that it says less than half a mile from the business district and on a public bus route. I mean, these are considerations that. Are requirements of the McMod. Thank you, okay. All edits. Okay, did you make a motion?
Chairman Cook.
Seconded, you did.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, um, any further discussion?
No.
Nope.
No.
If, if not, all those in favor, Ray Cook, I.
Anne Bardine, I.
Deb Hamilton, I.
Tim Cronin, I.
All right, so, uh, it passes four to zero with one planning board member not present. Okay. Katrina.
Yes.
Have we done the the most important stuff that we act, that we really needed to get done here on?
Um, no, you still need to do that last, uh, bulleted item.
Which one is that?
The, the one that, um, is at the very bottom of the page.
We just voted both of those.
Oh, you voted both of them? Okay.
Yes.
Um, yes, then you are all done. Um, I think I suggested you should talk about who is saying what, but you've already talked about that. And so we do have minutes.
Fine, we can do the minute.
Might as well do them. They're a little aged.
Wait, yeah, let's just, since it's right and the next thing on the line here. Oh, okay, you get the minutes coming up. That's good. That's fine. Is that large enough for everybody to see?
Yes.
Okay.
A little small. Maybe I can do that on my end.
Oh, uh, it, uh, don't let me forget to have a little discussion here about Tim's position.
Yes.
Done. I don't want to forget to talk about that.
Actually, Katrina, are you able to enlarge that? Are you?
Yeah.
Doing this? I'm sorry, but. Waiting for my eye doctor appointment.
I can go bigger.
Yeah, no, that's great. Thank you.
All right.
I I have a question about that first item.
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, I recused myself at some point where I I recused myself before it was even discussed.
Yes.
I don't see that in here.
Did you come late to this meeting? I think.
But this was a continuation. I don't know that you had to recuse every single time. I mean, you did it at the beginning of it.
I think, yeah, and I think I mentioned every single time.
Probably spoke isn't about her.
There it is. I see it.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so let's go back to page one.
Yeah, where was this? I just note that at the beginning of the second paragraph, Columbo discussed. If you read this second line there. That they're disregarding septic and stormwater as the Board of Health will conduct their interview. That's not. True, is it? Septic, Board of Health would do septic, but wouldn't, um, we do stormwater. Just saying for Mr. Columbo's edification. Not that he knows, but.
Yeah.
Well, the Board of Health was doing stormwater.
I mean, the stormwater bylaw, that's true, okay. I mean, as far as, okay, this is not for site improvements. It's for the stormwater bylaw.
They're gonna have to go to the Board of Health.
Okay, I was, I was forgetting about that new bylaw. Sorry.
Okay.
Go on.
Yes, page, uh, top of page two.
This looks like it should be due, due a.
Yeah.
All right, the last paragraph of page two, starting with Deb Hamilton.
I think there's a.
In.
Yeah, in general complaint, yeah.
All right.
Wait, I was finished reading what it says I said.
You have to prove, read closely what you say, right?
Ever you were. Remember how clever you were.
Um, I will say, you know how you've been talking about how detailed these minutes are? Well, all of these videos are on YouTube and YouTube actually does a, a draft of the minutes.
Oh, it's like a transcription?
Right. It's, it's very, very detailed and what Jen has to do with.
But we don't want an, a literal transcription.
Well, I like the fact that it says.
Oh, I think this level of detail is fine, but I do, do not want, again, to do voice recognition software for all our minutes.
No, and the other, the other thing is minutes are not required to be a transcription.
No, they're not.
I'm gonna move on.
Anybody can go back and watch.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Do you think that's the real spilling? I.
Yes, it is. It's unusual, but correct.
Right.
It may have been on the screen. Because otherwise, how would you know? Somebody's getting hungry. You can hear him.
Me.
Well, you know, he didn't bark though.
My husband is furiously cooking dinner right now.
Oh, nice.
Well, if you suddenly have an uncontrollable urge to bark, we'll understand.
Okay.
All right, good.
Yeah, yeah.
Top of page four, beginning with Cronin advised.
Hmm, always good to pay attention to.
Oh, yeah, but this part, I think, uh, I had my first name in here a few times.
Oh, yes, Tim.
It says Tim, yeah.
Tim suggested.
And do you want to get rid of that?
Well, you, it's.
Probably would be better just to call it Cronin.
Yep.
Yeah, let's be consistent.
Yeah.
Oh. I thought it had Tim Cronin, it's up there.
Yeah.
There's another. Bardine said they should include Tim's suggested language.
Six, six lines, one line's up in the middle.
Yep, there you got it.
Isn't that funny? Well. Who knows? Okay, then this is all just old history.
You know what I should do? Add to personal dictionary there.
There you go, yeah.
Excellent.
You know, seeing last names being used here reminds me, my mother was brought up in a situation where the children were brought into the parents ta, uh, at dinnertime. And the parents referred to themselves in front of the children as Mr. and Mrs. Avery.
Those Avery's, they always were snobs.
Yeah. Can't we just say formal?
Yes. Formal. That's, that's an era that has passed us by.
Yeah.
Except down south.
Yeah, maybe. Okay, public hearings, so.
Um, reading through this too, I may as well remind the board that I did just hear from zero middle street applicants and they are hoping to submit a new application next week. Um, which I'm not sure we're gonna have enough time to advertise it for the board's May twentieth meeting, but, um, we will see. And I can update the board at their May sixth meeting about that.
All right. Top of page six, please.
Looks good.
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Seeing all those in favor, Ray Cook, aye.
Bardine, aye.
Tim Cronin, aye. I am raising my hand.
Thank you. Okay, um. Yes. Let me jump in here and talk about Tim's position. Which I'm sure you, well, if you've looked at the ballot, it's going to, the paper ballot that's gonna come before the town. Um, nobody's name is under a planning board member. So the, so no one hold papers. Now, I looked into this, um, as I was doing my homework. And the planning board is to have five members. Um, that's a state requirement for the planning board. Now, in the absence of full, a full five members, um, I'm not quite sure how the associate member works. I know the associate member can step in for a particular uh, item.
Special permits. Yeah, but you can just step in otherwise.
Did he? Was he informed that he needed to apply?
He didn't want to.
Yeah, well, we, we talked to Ted about it and, and I don't think Ted wants, wants to be a full voting member of the planning board.
Oh. Oh, okay.
So the other thing that I bounced across, and again, you know, I haven't run this past any attorneys, so it's just, it's just little old me reading what I read. Um, in the absence of, of five members, the select board would appoint somebody. Um.
Yes.
Which is fine, but, uh, the other situation that, as my professor once said, obtains here is that, um, the position, it could easily be won by an election of a write-in.
Absolutely.
Person. Now, I don't, I am not aware of any names of any potential planning board members um, that have indicated an interest and who might be good. Wendy said that she had heard of somebody and that she was going to let us know. Um. So, uh, it, right now, it's all up in the air, but if, if the select board knows of somebody who wants to do it and has the select board's faith, then it would make sense, uh, for us to know that name as well. Um, so that we can decide whether or not, as individuals, we wish to vote for that person. But it could be somebody completely out of the blue as well. And given the contentious issues that have been in, in front of us recently, um, that's a, that's a real consideration. So I just wanted to mention it here, and if any planning board member knows of somebody in town that would be a good planning board member, then, uh, that might be of interest to other planning board members. And of course, all this, uh, is not official planning board stuff. I'm just pointing out the fact that we have an opening that is likely to be won by a write-in person. Um, and so be aware that names may be floated about. I don't, I don't know, I don't know how else to put things. But.
No, I think that's good advice. Um, the, the select board will not have the opportunity to appoint someone if a write-in candidate prevails.
Yes. And although it is likely that there is a write-in candidate with at least a few votes, which would be enough.
Yeah.
There is the distinct possibility that there is no one who has written in.
That's right, but we don't know.
And, and in that case, and by the way, I would have no problem with this. Uh, but in, in that case, the select board would then fill the position. What, Katrina, what I would need, uh, you to do eventually on this is find out if we're allowed to meet as a planning board if we don't have the full five voting members.
Yes, you are.
Are you sure?
I'm positive.
Okay.
But we just can't vote on anything.
Because the way I read the state law is that, that, that we're not a planning board unless there's five of us.
No, if you can, you can have absences, you can have people that leave the planning board and for months, we had boards that didn't have enough members in other communities. Um, and you do have four members. Uh, a quorum is still three.
That's fine, that's, that's.
Right, and, and what the other problem with four is, you, you, for the most part, it looks like this board votes on special permits more than definitive subdivisions and A and Rs, or maybe it's about the same. And so you would need, um, all members voting in favor for a special permit, and that's, that's kind of tough.
Well, in that case, though, we don't know whether Ted may put himself, you know, may still wish to be.
Oh, yeah, I forgot, yeah.
So then we took that for.
Yeah, and just, just to be clear here, Katrina, you can reassure me and maybe get confirmation as well, just, just to double down, so I, I wrestle a little easier. I understand that we can have five members and a board member can be absent. Like as, as is the situation tonight. I understand that that's just hunky-dory. Uh, even if the voting can be difficult, some applicants might not want to have only four people vote, but in any case, what I was unsure about is, are we allowed to operate as a board if we have fewer members than is required by law?
Okay.
Yeah, she said.
Can I just say one thing about write-ins too, which is the limited experience that I've seen with them in this town is that write-in folks don't make themselves known until quite late in game.
Yeah, there's.
To avoid write-in battles, so we shall see.
There's two ways to do it, and one is to openly campaign to be a write-in candidate and even to hand out little slips of paper so people know how to spell your name.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's the, there's the secret write-in campaign, which has been exercised in this town in the past, much to my dismay.
Yes.
And that can happen.
Wow.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's interesting. Okay, well, we'll stay tuned.
Ray, and I am a hundred percent sure of my answer on that.
Okay, all right.
Question?
Yes.
Um, there, there's no way that we could prevail upon Tim Cronin to remain on the planning board and.
Not for a five-year term now, Deb.
Can we create an interim?
Or, or until the select board fill your position.
Until the select board fills the position.
Deb, like I said earlier, everybody's got a price, we just haven't found Tim.
Well, Tim let us know this quite a while ago, so I don't think.
Yeah, it is a little surprising because I actually had opposition when I ran. Um, last time, yeah.
Yeah, I think in the meantime, I think a lot of people in town have realized just how much work we put in and how
Yes.
flexible our position can be and.
Yeah, we really, we really sold it pretty well.
Yeah.
I will say, this, this board does more work than a lot of boards I have dealt with before who come to meetings. Um, and they're not aware of the information in front of them until they read it at the meeting.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, you've got to give yourself credit. Um, you do a lot of work for this town.
Well, that's nice of you to say, Katrina, thank you.
It's, it's a great board. I, I, I've enjoyed the short time I've been here.
And as long as we're patting each other on the back, uh, let me say on behalf of the other board members, Katrina, that we're very lucky to have you.
Oh.
Definitely.
Very lucky.
Is great, hard to have all these materials, so well worked, thank you.
Um, do we have any other items not reasonably expected?
I have none.
So for the agenda, I'm just trying to, all these extra meetings and different meetings are scrambling my brain. Town meeting's next Monday, then we meet again the following week on Tuesday, which is the post-Tim Cronin era. Post-election day.
When is the election?
May fifth, wasn't it?
May fifth, it's a Monday.
Okay, so we meet the day after the election.
We meet the day after the election, okay. And by then, we'll know whether we'll know if any write-in situation happened.
Right, they won't, they, they will not have had time to get sworn in yet for the Tuesday night meeting, I don't think.
Oh, sure they will.
Really?
Their first thing, or waiting for balls to close, you can get sworn in that night, or you can get.
You know, it could happen that somebody gets elected who didn't know they were being elected.
I know, well, they can decline, they can decline.
Don't go back, Tim.
It can decline, you don't have to be.
Decline to serve.
It's like, it's out of the Lyndon Baines Johnson book of election year.
Too bad if anything happened at that nice garden, Tim, you know?
Yeah, yeah. And then, uh, uh, Ann, correct me if I'm wrong here, but, uh, Katrina, our tradition has been then to, uh, wait a couple of meetings.
Before reorganizing, yes.
Reorganizing the officers and.
Yes, do you want me to put on, that on the first June agenda?
Yeah, let's, I think that might, it usually is early in June when we do it.
Is it, or was it the last meeting in May?
Yeah. I actually, in other towns, I always did it at the beginning of June and, and that's also the time that the Registry of Deeds asks for new signatures from all members to be sent in.
And also the appointments of the associates and stuff, let's just, let's just do it that.
Okay, so our first meeting in June, unless I'm mistaken, is June third.
Yeah, so that's early in.
Yeah, and then, uh, uh, and then I'll, I'll be, presumably, I'll be stepping away from the chair position.
Right.
And then, um, uh, Deb, are you vice chair?
Oh, Lord.
Deb, Deb's managed to, uh, get us to hop over her term a couple of years now, so.
Well, we, we, we can have that discussion.
Yes, we'll have that later.
Yeah.
Good.
But.
I, I would love to see Brian or Ann put that hat back on.
Well, but instead of, because I think it would have actually been Tim's turn this year.
Oh, right.
Maybe that's why.
I think I was vice chair, yep, I am vice chair. I am vice chair until Cinco de Mayo.
Well, that'll give you an extra reason to break open a Corona, uh, Corona.
And to, and to interview people to replace you.
Oh, boy. I'm replaceable, definitely.
That develops.
I've come to the conclusion at my age that we're all replaceable and thank God.
Oh, yeah, Tim, it was nice working with you.
Yeah, I'm gonna miss you, Tim.
It's very solid.
No, 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 Tim, Tim still has official duties at town meeting, you gotta.
Town meeting, I'll be there.
Yeah, and I, and I'm gonna be looking over here to answer questions that are too, uh, tough or uncomfortable for me to answer.
Yep. Hey, how about Ted? Is Ted able to, uh, because he's, you know, I've been very helpful, I think particularly on the MBTA too, right? And he's put his ideas together.
I hope he's at the meeting.
It, it's, yeah, it's our tradition as a planning board to, uh, consider the associate member with full respect, and so if he wanted to weigh in on something and had.
Yeah.
I think it'd be great if he did. I mean, you know, he, he does public presentations for, for his own projects all the time. He knows, you know, I think he's a good presenter.
Yeah.
Excellent, yes.
Could I just tell a little story of something that happened today to, so everyone leaves on an up note? Um, you know, we all have our theories on, you know, why people oppose it. There's different reasons to oppose the MBTA zoning. Well, I had, um, um, an elderly woman come in today with a cane and she said, can you tell me a little bit about this? This, you know, multifamily housing that's going in on the nap party. She was all upset, all upset. She's seen the signs and heard it um, from neighbors. And she stayed for about forty-five minutes and by the end, I'm pretty sure I had her convinced to vote for it. Um, she just didn't understand, she's all for more housing. Um, she thought it was, it was something that the, you know, state was ramming down our throats. And I explained and I said, the reason why you hear so much opposition, first, there's the people that are just gonna be against it because they don't want to be told what to do. Next, you have a butters, and we all know that if we abutted a project, we may be opposed to it also, there's that fear. So there's two big groups right there that are in opposition. The only people you usually hear from are the people that are angry and want, you know, feel like they're being oppressed, and so usually you end up hearing from them. And I witnessed it at Rowley Town Meeting, the ones that are for it aren't really happy about being for it because they don't really like how the state changed zoning either. They're not really happy, but they're gonna do the sensible thing. And they're very quiet because they have nothing to talk about, really. They're just very, very quiet and they're not gonna fight for it, of course, because they're reluctantly voting for it because the state, it's a law, the state wants us to adopt it and is forcing us to adopt it. Um, and so that's why you only hear from the people that are opposed to it. For the most part, I, I did see a bunch of signs for MBTA zoning on Main Street today. I don't know if anyone else saw them.
And I'll, I'll mention this as well. Um, you know, we've had two planning board informational meetings this spring about it. And after both meetings, people that I did not know came up to thank me for, uh, having, having the meeting, the way the meeting was conducted and for the work that we put into it. And even on Facebook, I've had some people DM me, private message me or whatever, however you're supposed to say it. Thanking the planning board for our work, they, they realize, you know, somehow through all this stuff, they came to realize just how much time and effort we put into it.
Oh, good.
Uh, and so, yeah, there are people in town who appreciate our efforts.
And remember, they're, they're silent for the most part. The, the Rowley Town vote, it was overwhelmingly, you could hear it in opposition, and there was. The, the Rowley Town vote, it was overwhelmingly, you could hear it in opposition, and there was six hundred people there, and that vote was only like twenty or thirty votes apart, so it was about fifty percent for, fifty percent against.
Oh.
You would never know it.
That, um, I don't know, uh, there is a possibility that the vote at town meeting, that somebody will ask for it to be by paper ballot. I forget what, there's a name
Really?
Yeah.
And in Rowley, we did that too.
I don't think we're doing that, are we? I don't think we
Well, if someone asks for it, it has to be.
Wendy, uh, Wendy let me know that that, that that could happen, and that they're already talking about how to handle it if it does. And, uh, and I mentioned to Wendy, and I'm sure Deb and, and maybe even Tim, uh, in the past, uh, Kate Swallow, the town moderator, has, has cautioned the town against requiring the paper ballot, giving people a chance to reconsider their, their request to have a paper ballot done. And, uh, that's prevailed sometimes, and other times, we've gone ahead and done the, the paper ballot.
I mean, I know counting the vote is a thing, but paper ballot? I don't remember that ever happening.
Yeah, I remember, it, it has happened occasionally, and, and, uh, the reason is, is people are, are afraid of being seen as voting one way or another.
Yeah.
Yes.
Especially, especially if you're gonna be voting differently than your friends or neighbors
Right.
want you to vote. So that could happen, and if it does, you know, it'll slow things down.
It will.
A half an hour to an hour, but, uh,
Yeah.
So just to, to put you on notice, that could happen.
Are they expecting this town meeting to go more than one night?
I didn't
They, they are fully prepared for it to go more than one night. You do know that the MBTA is first on the agenda?
Mm-hmm. And is it special or a regular town meeting?
It's, it's, it's on the, first on the special.
So what they usually do is they open town meeting, then they adjourn it, and then take up the special town meeting, but I can't remember they do, they don't do the town, um, budget, the, the they do that afterward, right?
Yeah, the town budget is part of the regular town meeting, so they get through all the special stuff, and then, yeah.
Yeah.
They do a couple things, like they might do Citizen of the Year or something, but then
Oh, that's true, that's right, and, uh, and are all three of our, um, endorsed items here for ADUs and, uh, and Riverfront, is that, are those all on the special?
I don't know.
I think zoning bylaws always are in the special, but I might be wrong.
Oh, remember, there's the battery energy storage system.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of, and there's a right to farm too, isn't there a right to farm, or is that, that's a town bylaw?
Yeah, that's town.
That's not ac- is that actually a bylaw?
It's a town bylaw, not a zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
I think.
But, so you've got battery, energy storage, floodplain, accessory dwelling unit, and McMUD.
Gotcha.
Zoning.
Oh, boy.
And by the way, I, I'm probably being naive about this, but I'm optimistic. I, I think the more, the more people dig into this and, and find out about it. I
Well, Katrina, you, you didn't finish your story. How did the lady who came in to see you feel at the end?
Oh, no, by, by the end, um, I think I, I had convinced her. Um, she said, oh, I just didn't know all of that about that, and I said, well, please consider voting for it, she said, I, I will consider.
I hope she played
Doesn't mean she will, but
Hope she breaks her friends.
She has a bridge club, and No, seriously, I mean, that's the way a lot of these things
Right.
out it is, you know, people sitting down together.
Yeah.
By the way, Tim, uh, before you showed up tonight, we voted that you go to the food mart, uh, and
The food mart?
Yeah, hang out there from
I love the food mart.
Yeah, hang out there from five to seven, do people still, I haven't been for a while, do people still, there used to be a group of unofficial town officials that used to sit on benches, uh, near the cash register and talk over all things towny.
Oh, yeah, it was kind of intimidating because they'd be there at like five thirty in the morning, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was just like get this gathering, I was like, what's going on?
Give you the side eye. All right, then. Um, motion to adjourn?
In second.
All right, well, very good. Tim, thanks for your last, uh, planning board meeting, and
Absolutely. Thank you for all the, um, support, and, and, uh, it has been really an excellent experience, and, you know, I know I'm kind of letting you down a little bit.
No, 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 you, you, you gave, man, you gave. We, we ended up, we ended up really liking you, that's the problem.
A likable lawyer, who, who does that?
Wow. Yeah, give that a lawyer is a good name. All right, all those in favor of adjourned, we
Right. Birdie and I.
Hi.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you.
All right, good night.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good night.